Okay, if I can have everybody's attention, I'll call this meeting to order. Caitlin, if you'll call, roll.
Ross?
Here.
White? Taylor?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
President.
A quorum as president, your honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman Height. I'll invite you to stand with us as he gives us our prayer and pledge.
Father, we thank you for your son, who his resurrection we celebrated yesterday on that glorious Easter Sunday here in Arkansas and all across this world. And, Lord, we also want you to be mindful of and remember all those people over in Europe that have been victimized by terrorists in the last few days and weeks. And, Lord, we pray that you'll be with our military forces overseas as they protect us and here at home as they protect us too and be with all of our uniformed officers and firemen and policemen here in North Little Rock as they strive to keep us safe. Lord, we thank you for allowing us together here tonight to do the city business and we hope that everything that we say, everything that we do, and everything that we think will be pleasing in your sight. Forgive us of our sins, in Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher, excuse me.
Yes.
Okay, communications. Anybody want to pull a communications? I'm showing four. I've seen none. How about a blanket?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height? And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me explain one thing on these communications. This proposal to the City Council for Stone Links Park. You know, tonight, we're going to vote on appropriating some money to start this project. Sometime, probably in one or two meetings from now, we're going to come back to you with this formal proposal that will officially ask, request, I don't know the exact word, of the Parks Commission and Parks Director to take over the responsibility of Stone Links and it would become Stone Links Park in North Little Rock. So, that's coming. I just wanted you to be aware of it and that's what this is. If there's anything on here that you want to change on the draft, you know, as far as giving Stone Links to the Parks Department, then let us know and we'll talk about it between now and... Terry, didn't we decide the last meeting in April, we were going to try to do that?
Yes, sir, that was the first one.
Okay. Yeah, we want to do this professionally and we want to do it legally and we want the Parks Commission to be involved in it, so it might take us four to six weeks to make it all happen.
I think you told me by May 11th, you want it done for sure, so that gives us two meetings plus.
Counsel, you got...
Well, the only thing I was thinking about was how our Parks and Recreation Ordinance is structured. We've got, you know, we made a comprehensive ordinance that defines all the areas of jurisdiction, so that would be an ordinance that would need to be amended.
Yes, sir.
Have the map made and then that, I think it's, I mean, since I've looked at it, that, I don't have the whole ordinance memorized, but I think it's 1.6.1 that's got, you know, that lists each park within the city that the...
Jason gave me instructions on how to go forth on this, to go through my commissioners, then come back and ask y'all for permission.
Okay. Well, we're heading in that direction, so I want everybody to know, so we certainly want your input. You've got at least a month, maybe six weeks, in order to bend our ear.
Can we ask questions about things that are going to be taking place out there as far as...
If you want to, sure.
Linda?
Yes.
Here's your bike trail that you've been always been wanting. The walking paths, how wide are they?
The walking paths would be approximately six to eight feet across. We're using a lot of the standard cart paths that were there then to make them updated.
So, are we going to allow cyclists and pedestrians, walkers, on those paths?
Right now, I think we can, yes, sir. We'll look at it as we go forward, Mr. Height, and see how much traffic we are getting and from there we can... In fact, I've got, if you look at, we've actually got two miles of it laid out that we'll be undertaking. So, we might designate one of them as a biking trail, one of them as walking, but again, we're looking at trying to encompass both of them at the same time for right now.
Then y'all are conscious then of any possible grant money that Jeff could apply for biking purposes out there?
Yes, we are.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, or Terry? Okay. Ms. Ross?
When's the next Parks and Rec Commission meeting?
April 18th, if I'm not mistaken.
So, this will be, will it be on the agenda for April 18th?
Yes, it will. In fact, there'll be, yes, there will.
Okay. Just going to recommend if anyone would like to go to the Parks, those meetings are open to the public. If anybody would like to express their...
April 18th?
Yes, I'm sure that's a Monday, if I'm not mistaken, April 18th, so that would be our next Commissioners' Meeting at the Parks. And it's on the agenda, that one and a couple of other things we'll be discussing.
At the Community Center?
No, we're going to change it to the New Heritage Center. That particular meeting would be at Burns Park. I've just got that redone. I want to have a meeting out there, so we're going to have it at that spot.
Where at Burns Park?
We've got a new, what we call the Heritage Center, Heritage Room, at the Burns Park Golf Course. It's a new...
The old Pro Shop.
We've taken it and renovated it. So, if you'd like to come, you'd like to see, it's been redone completely, so we're going to kind of show it off and have our meeting there.
Heritage?
It's called the Heritage Center. We've named it after, with our good friend and big supporter of Burns Park Golf is Glenn Day, the professional golfer, and he won the Heritage Classic. And so, we have, we're asking the Commission, if we hadn't already, to name it the Heritage Room. And Glenn is giving us a bunch of memorabilia from his victory at the Heritage Classic.
In fact, he was there last Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. Glenn came in for a while to look at it and very proud of it, very proud of the way it looked.
I was just getting confused with the Heritage Center.
The Heritage Room at the golf course.
Heritage Room, whatever.
Heritage, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe you call it the Heritage Classic Room, I don't know.
Whatever you ask.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought of the History Commission when you said the Heritage Room. Yeah. That's called the Heritage, that's renamed.
Heritage Classic Room, Center, whatever. I'll get it named.
Mr. Taylor?
What's the date again, please?
April 18th for our Commission meeting, Mr. Taylor.
And the time?
We start at 5:00.
And it's at the golf course?
Is at the golf course. It's the old building that y'all might remember being, the oval one with the spirals around the top of it. We've redone that room for, that would be used like a hospitality room also. It's already being rented. We've updated both the bathrooms and the area in there for men and women, of course, and for a convention or even a party room or even a, whatever you might like. So, it's been redone. The mayor was out there, I think Chief of Staff was out there last week, and everybody was pretty excited about how it looked.
It looks marvelous.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Ross?
So, all that was leading to that, if anybody really has some concerns about this and, you know, because it's not a done deal until the Parks and Rec Commission approves this, so if anybody...
Stone Links. You're talking about Stone Links?
Yes, Stone Links. Right. So, if anybody wants to show up, it would be a good time to do that.
If the money is appropriated now, I will immediately start mowing though, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you so much, Terry.
Thank you.
What do you want to... We're going to skip unfinished business right this second until Mr. Baxter tells me to call it without objection. And let's go into consent agenda. We want to pull any of those out?
R-1656.
56?
Uh-huh.
Okay, we're pulling 56. Any others?
Are any of the appointees here tonight?
I don't see any, but I'll recognize them as a group here in just a second. Okay, how about...
Do we want to pull out R-1658 since we... Did you want to do that?
Ken, if you want to.
Since we, yeah, I think we were voting that singularly.
All right, we'll pull 58, 56 and 58. All right, how about a motion to accept all but 56 and 58?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Caitlin, call 1656.
R-1656, Mayor Smith, a resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment a surplus, providing for auction thereof.
Move for adoption.
Quick, quick. We'll have a second.
Second.
All right, question?
Quick, quick question. All right, I had a Senior Citizen Commission meeting today and we have several computers down that use Windows 7 and I was wondering if any of these were operable that could be transferred to the Senior Citizen Center.
Mayor Beth?
If they are, then I'm sure they could. I can find out.
We can pull them, but I doubt it. But go ahead.
But we can find out if they are, sure. There'll be no problem. I'll ask, I was trying to think of who presented this. Parks? I'll ask them if any of them are still in decent condition and enough that Senior Center could use them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Ross?
Well, two different things. The Tilt-A-Whirl and the Scrambler at Burns Park at Funland, is that, have they been replaced or haven't been out there?
No, they're still out there. They're just in bad condition and one of them, like the Scrambler needs so much maintenance, it's going to be very expensive. So, they're just going to remove them and do something else, put something in their place.
Oh, okay, I guess that's...
So, we'll sell them as is.
Those things are older than I am.
And then have them to disassemble them.
No, they're not. They're not. Nothing's that old, huh?
Okay. The second one, the two walkway planks from the Patriot Boat, is there absolutely no way possible whatsoever those could be used for the bridge and liquid that we were wanting?
Well, you know, our city engineer tells me, not without costing a whole lot of money. We've got those sitting on the ground. We haven't gotten rid of them yet. So, if you can help our engineer figure out a way to do it that doesn't cost a quarter of a million dollars, then absolutely.
Okay. Before we put that out, can we have another chance to look at that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are sitting out at Paul Hastings Yard, right?
Correct.
Are they on this list?
Yes.
They are. In fact, I just can wait to put them out. I won't put them on the auction.
I mean, let's prove to put them in auction, but we will hold them.
Okay.
Where did you say they're sitting?
At Paul Hastings' property.
Where is that?
I don't know.
Now, close to the port.
If I wanted someone to go out there and look at it?
Call me.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take you out there and show them to you.
Okay.
We felt like he's probably going to be the only one of the very few that are going to be interested in purchasing it if we put it up for an auction, so we didn't want to have to pay to move them twice, because you have to rent a crane and a, it's what, a couple thousand dollars just to move them?
Yes.
Yeah. Or more?
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
So, that's why we dropped them out there instead of taking them to the airport. So, who's going to be in custody of them until we decide what to do with them? So, absolutely, Mayor Beth will carry you out there. All right, on the motion.
All right, Ross?
And you're going to hold those, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1658, Mayor Smith?
Okay, Mayor Beth, we're holding those and we're seeing if any of the other computers will work with Windows 7. All right, okay. All right, please call it.
A resolution appropriating $40,000 for the Stone Links Trail Project at Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Discussion, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption of the balance of the consent agenda.
Second. What did you say, Murray?
The balance of the consent agenda, move for adoption.
We've already done that.
We've already done that.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm way behind you.
Okay. All right, new business.
All right, new business. R-1660, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the expenditure of donated funds to remove a building.
How about a motion and we'll get Chief Bradley to come explain it.
Come here. Second.
Chief, you want to come up and, I think everybody knows what we're doing, but we'll tell them.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I think there was some, one in the audience that wanted to speak, had signed up to speak on that resolution for Stone Links and we missed them.
You're certainly right. Mr. Thomas? Please accept my apologies. I didn't look down at my sheet. Feel free to come up to the microphone. You bet.
I'm Willie Thomas. I'm the current president of the Neighborhood Association for Stone Links and I'd just like to say we do appreciate the opportunity for the city to take part in helping our community out there. We really need it. We was facing another opportunity for weeds to be grown up and now that the city is going to take part in creating something out there, I think that's going to be very beneficial for our community. Again, I'd just like to say thank you.
Well, we're glad and we wouldn't have gone forward if your neighborhood group had have been against it and, you know, we've been working closely with you and several members of your board and your two council members are the ones that are giving us the money to make this stuff happen, so you can thank them. So, thank you for what you do for your neighborhood and for our city.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, Chief.
Thank you. Some time ago, a local resident and businessman had complained about the eyesore that's known as the Old Muffer Shop here on East Broadway and, you know, inquired about the city getting it taken down and offered to, if necessary, to pay for it. Well, I checked with, Jason and I discussed it and Code has looked at it. It doesn't meet the definition to be condemned by the city to go through the condemnation procedures, so that was not an option. So, I called the owner, contacted the owner and after several discussions, he agreed that it was in his best interest also if the city was taken down, but it's not. The city took the building down, but it's not in, he's not interested in paying for it. So, the, as it stands right now, we have someone who has tentatively agreed to meet the costs based on legal explanation that the city can't pay for it. And so, now with the council approval, we'll go forward getting an estimate of the cost to take it down and proceed with being the kind of intermediary between this person and the owner of the property to clean up a unsightly site on one of our main streets in downtown.
A question.
Ms. Ross?
So, no city employees will be used there, no street department, no one, absolutely no one will be on, okay, good. That was the main thing I wanted to make sure that doesn't happen.
Right.
Is that just that one building?
Right there on Broadway, not the ones? The old three-star muffler. The old three-star muffler. Move for adoption. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
I have a que, yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused as to... So, we have a piece of private property that someone wants torn down. So, and how do we get involved in this? And can we even be involved in it?
Well, and the answer is, is we can't use public funds to improve private property, right? So, we can't do that. But if somebody says, hey, you know that building down there, I think that's really ugly and if the owner was okay with it, I'd be willing to pay for tearing it down. Hear that and you go have a conversation with the owner and the owner would say, I'd be okay with somebody tearing my building down if I didn't have to pay for it, you know? So, then I think all we're trying to do is to facilitate the relationship between the two of them. But this is, as Alderman Ross asked and Chief Bradley correctly answered, this isn't city funds, this isn't city forces, this isn't anything. We're just putting the right people together to have an anonymous donor with a conduit to be able to contribute funds, to have a building torn down, to improve the aesthetic appearance of the city.
Sounds like a pretty sweet deal to me. Ms. Ross?
Not in accounting, but there's possibly a tax break somewhere in there too. If it's donated to the city, would the funds go directly to the city?
Yeah. Interested? Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1661, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 226 College Park Circle in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second. I have a call, public hearing on 226 College Park Circle. Anyone here to speak on 226 College Park Circle? Seeing none, closed public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1662, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 723 West 35th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Call a public hearing on 723 West 35th, otherwise known as 3508 Chandler, to constitute a public nuisance. Seeing none, closed public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Comment?
I'm sorry.
No, actually, today, this building, this particular house, the back door, the doors have been open on it for several days and there's graffiti all over it, so it's even worse now than what the pictures show, so it's not been maintained at all. Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1663, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 2104 Moss Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
So moved.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 2104 Moss Street. Anyone here to speak on 2104 Moss Street? Seeing none, closed public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1664, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amount of liens to be filed with the Plassey County Taskmaster against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on certain real properties and cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, closed public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinances?
Uh-huh.
O-1618, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing a one-time payment of $80,000 to the local police and fire retirement system, LOPF, for the benefit of certain retirees or their beneficiaries of the North Little Rock Police and Fireman's Relief and Pension Funds. First reading.
Move, spin all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption.
How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. But how about the emergency?
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1618, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a tire store in a C-3 zone for certain real property located at 3900 Camp Robinson Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
I've got two sign-ups for this legislation. The first is Terry Burris. Terry? You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
You bet. I certainly am.
Mayor, I appreciate your willingness to sponsor us on the agenda tonight and I appreciate the City Council's members' willingness to hear us as we present our project. This is Rent-A-Wheel, which is a national franchise that has one store currently in Little Rock and is looking to put this store location in North Little Rock at 3900 Camp Robinson Road. If you look at the site plan, we've worked through this project with the city staff and received approval from the Planning Commission at the Planning Commission meeting. This, we're not a tire store per se. We have wheels which equate to rims and tires become an ancillary use of the facility. What we've done is locating the proposed addition to the rear of the site. This is where any activity takes place with automobiles. If you look at the site plan, you'll notice that we've removed quite a bit of pavement, existing pavement, from the front area and are doing some extensive landscaping. So, our desire is to dress this site up, to give it a good street image and a good street presence that will complement the area. I've also passed out a handout that shows a couple of structures, one in Memphis that shows some before and then after pictures and one, the one in Little Rock that shows before and after pictures. Also, you can see that there's some interior shots of a standard store and you can see the displays consist of rims and wheels. Tires, a small amount of tires are kept on the site so that they can facilitate working with a customer if that customer needs tires for the rims or wheels that they are purchasing. What I wanted to do was address the physical aspects of the project. We will be upgrading the existing building, changing the front. We'll be changing out the signage and installing monument signs so that we fulfill the obligations of our Planning Commission requirements as well as meet the city planning ordinances. At this time, I'd like to, if it's okay, go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. John Raines, who is owner of the facility, so that he can discuss that aspect.
Sure. Come right ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. I was thinking about, first of all, my background. I grew up in retail. My mom owned an apartment store back in Georgia and I worked my way through, I worked my way in high school and that, my way through college selling produce where there's a lot of unethical people and I tried to be ethical in that. And then have done several other things. But my brother and I looked at getting involved in this business and there were three major national chains that were in it. And we went and visited with all three and although this was the most expensive one for us to get in bed with, we felt like they were the most ethical and frankly put forward the best image. And at any rate, I was thinking about if I were where you were and somebody came in and they said they were putting in a wheel and tire store, the first thing that comes to mind is, are there going to be these massive stacks of tires sitting on the property? And they aren't, there aren't. As a practical matter, the way it works is if we sell a customer tires, we take their existing tires, we bag them up each in single bags and they typically take them home with themselves. And if they run into a problem down the road, you know, paying for the tires, they can bring them back at any time and we remount them for them and there's no extra charge for doing that. So, we don't, we're not used tire sellers in terms of, you know, if a tire is bad or the customer does not want the tire, those are, we don't stockpile any, they're disposed every week and we do theirselves with the recycler. So, there's just, we make a weekly run down there and handle that on our Pulaski, well, our one Pulaski County store, the Little Rock store, and this one will be the same way. In Memphis, it's done different. The way it works out there, they have a vendor that comes and does it, but even there, it's a weekly disposal, so there's simply no, we just, you're never going to come by there and see a stack of tires sitting around. The second thing I thought about was you hear rent and you hear horror stories about collection efforts and that sort of thing. I can assure you, we operate ethically. We don't go leave people with cars on blocks. The vast majority of our customers pay, they pay on time. Some you have to call and remind them, just like you do in any type of retail business where you're taking payments in this day and, you know, a small fraction of those, we do, you know, have to go to small claims court and get a replevin's. But we try to bend over backwards not to make that happen because that's, one, it's a lose-lose situation. You get a mad customer and then, you know, it costs more than it's worth most of the time to do that. You get a mad customer and then, you know, it costs more than it's worth most of the time to do that. So we run a company that, we will only be a five-store chain. This will be our fourth one. There won't be any more in Pulaski County. But our employees like working for us. It's a family-owned business. Mr. Jose Palacios is out here, if you raise your hand. He's a, since he's served in the Air Force here many years ago, he's been a native of Pulaski County, primarily living in Jacksonville during that time. But he's out here on the ground all the time. Our customers like us. We have a good reputation. And the overall parent company is the largest in the industry with about, I think, a hundred and forty some odd stores now nationally. So they certainly keep a close eye on us and making sure we maintain their reputation. But I'd be glad to answer any questions or concerns.
Do you have, if you don't mind telling us, what's your budget's going to be in the remodel in the, to this building?
Remember Terry? It's going to be in the, I think it was about, I think it's a hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand on the remodel.
Okay.
It's a pretty significant investment.
Right, thank you. Any other questions?
Comments, Ms. Ross, Ms. White?
I guess my biggest concern are the residents right behind the building and all the work will be done in the back of the building, which basically is going to be in their backyard. And anybody that's been into our tire shop knows how loud, you know, it can be. So will, you know, the worst be done, will the bay doors be shut while work is being done?
I don't think so because I'm just thinking about our other locations. The one in, on University Avenue in Little Rock, there's a church right behind there.
But they're not there twenty-four seven though?
No, but the pastor lives there and I've actually gone and talked to him and there's been no complaints there. I understand, but then there's also houses immediately behind that too. It's a pretty tight neighborhood in there and we've had no complaints there. It's really not that loud. It's not like a mechanic shop where you got a lot of banging going on and stuff. And we don't use power tools to torque these wheels down like you see at most tire shops. And I could lie and tell you that was because of noise, but it's not. It's a safety feature in that we torque these wheels to exact manufacturer specifications and we will not allow an air wrench to be used at all.
So you won't have any of that?
No.
I don't know what it's called.
Yeah, well, you know, when you, you hear the loud wrenches. Yeah, we, I mean, if somebody brings one in, they get fired. I mean, it's that serious a thing for us. It's not about noise, but it's a safety, it's a safety. These wheels are, these rims are very expensive and if you over torque them, you damage them and it makes them unsafe and unreliable. So no, we don't have, that's your primary thing that you were talking about in terms of noise.
Absolutely, that's my number one.
We don't, there's no, there's none in our stores and we're not allowed by our franchise or to have any.
So you're going to guarantee there's going to be no noise then?
Well, I mean, a business has noise, but I mean, no.
But you're not going to have the, you know, transient noise, that's one thing.
Yeah, but no, the main noise I'm aware of is the, is the, is the air wrenches that you hear that are still loud. We have none of those in our locations.
Okay, alright.
We have a wrench like that, it's like a ratchet.
Okay, another thing in here, planning, there was allowed to have tires outside. Are, do you absolutely have to have tires outside?
Well.
On display?
Yeah, we don't really.
We're trying, let me just say, Camp Robinson, that area, we've been working really hard to get that area cleaned up. I mean, there's a lot going on right now and having tires sitting out in front of the building, that's the one comment I've heard from the area.
I think what you're thinking of is would we have like, if you want to buy, it'll look like a Michelin Man situation with tires stacked up. That's not the way ours will be.
Well, no, I'm just looking at the pictures of the stores that you've got that have tires sitting out front there, you know.
Well, it's a little different.
If there was no tires sitting out front, I could, I could probably go for this. But, and.
You mind showing me the picture you're referring to?
The one after construction, Little Rock, Arkansas? You've got your tires all lined up out front there?
Can we just add a condition that there's no outdoor storage?
Yeah.
Or display?
I'm sorry.
Add a condition that there's no outdoor display?
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can live, I can live with that. I can tell you with the way it, just so we're clear with the way it, I see what you're saying. Now, the way it operates in Little Rock, we don't maintain a static display out there. We do from time to time, you know, during prime traffic hours.
I don't want to see any wheels out there.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so, Mr. Carter, if you can, he's on it, he's on it, boss, okay.
Ms. White, anything to add?
Not, I can't add too much to what she said except the residences behind and you realize that, I often put myself in a situation that if I lived in that house and that business was going in behind me, how would I feel about it? And I have to say, even if it doesn't have the air, what did you call it?
Air wrenches.
Air wrenches. There's going to be noises. I mean, there's going to be things that the folks along there are going to hear as opposed to some of the other businesses that are along there, the auto parts and things like that. You know, there's not.
It won't be any louder than auto parts stores, I can tell you.
Auto parts, people go in, buy something and head out.
Right, no work in the back.
So it's not like a work, it's not like a workstation, a dedicated workstation.
I understand what you're saying, but the auto parts stores would typically generate more noise than we would. Not ninety percent of their customers, but ten to fifteen percent come in and they do the repairs right there. Though most, like Autozone and the other major people in that industry come out and do that. So our noise level won't be any greater than what they're doing. I mean, you pull it.
We might also point out that the bay doors don't face the rear.
That's right.
Bay doors face to the side. And we've got a high, solid opaque wood fence for privacy and for sound as well as we're planting additional trees and things which will help shield the sound. So we do want to be aware of it and do what we can to lessen that impact.
I would say that the road noise on the street will drastically outweigh the noise we make selling, selling our product.
Okay, well, we'll end that part of the discussion right now. But I do have one other thing you mentioned that I wanted to ask about. You said some customers just take the tires in a bag. What does that mean? I don't understand what that.
Well, in other words, in other words, let's say, let's say you come in and you buy, you buy a set of custom rims, that we call those, I had to learn when I got in it, wheels are rims and tires are tires, wheels aren't tires. But anyway, you come in and you buy a set of rims and a set of tires from me. And you put them on, you know, we put them on your automobile, you take off and let's just say you drive that vehicle for eight months or a year and you decide you want another vehicle. You want to move those expensive wheel, that product that you bought from me to another automobile, for instance. Well, you would want to put your, your stock set of wheels back on that car. So most customers will take those home, put them in their garage and if they need them, they can pop them on there. Or they'll save one for a spare and use it that way. Or they'll have another automobile and they'll put them on those. That's what I'm talking about. Instead of just throwing a tire in somebody's backseat or in their trunk, we have these nice bags we put them up in so they don't mar their cars if they want to take them with them. Does that answer?
In a way, but I'm just thinking, a disposal situation, is there any chance they're going to just go dump them alongside of the road? I mean, this.
Well, if the tire's not usable, I mean, we're going to dispose of it. If the tire's got any useful life in it, I mean, they typically want to keep it. I mean, if we dispose it, it goes to the recycler down in Little Rock.
They take the tire and the old wheel off?
Right, right. Right, yeah. And we put it, you understand, we put it in a bag. And the purpose of the bag is just to keep from messing up their automobile. So.
Thank you.
Hi. Can they come in and just buy tires?
You can, but that is, I'll just be frank, the margin's not on the tires.
I understand that.
And so we're not in the tire business. Now, I have a competitor that is out here. In fact, anyway, I know those folks well and they run a good business. But I talked to their, to their friend, the owner of their, the franchisor, they're based down in Tampa. And when I was looking at the different business models, I asked, what is the difference between what you do and what Rent-A-Wheel does? And the owner of, that started the overall franchising company said that we, meaning they, are a tire shop and we, what I wound up buying into, is a custom rim shop. And really, that was what tipped me into this business because the margins are frankly better in the wheels than they are on the tires. And they hold up better if you have a problem, you know. So I'm not saying it never happens, but it is.
You're in the rim business?
Yes.
Okay, my next question is this, is that are you going, you're setting up a payment plan? You're going to be financing them?
Yes.
Set up a payment plan for them?
Well, it's technically a rental transaction, but, you know, our goal is to get them.
Rent-to-purchase, is this rent-to-buy?
Yeah, that's right. It, the business operates under the State's Rental Purchase Act. I mean, it's within it, but, you know, our goal and the way we work it, we're pretty flexible in how we deal with people because our business model is around getting them to ownership and getting them paid for and then their next automobile, they come and do another transaction with us.
The other thing I wanted to remind Alderman White and Alderman Ross about is when we dealt with tire stores that were in residential neighborhoods and our ward are possibly up there north of them on Camp Robinson, we restricted their hours to eight to six P.M. instead of eight to eight P.M. The thought, you know, if you want to, could you live with six P.M. closing time?
Well, I would ask for seven because that's really what the national time is. I think at planning and zoning, there was some thought that, well, I mean, most people are open, but we don't need to be open till eight, but it would help if we could stay there till seven.
Okay.
And I'm comfortable with not opening till ten in the morning or ten-thirty, it doesn't matter. I mean, but, but the primary trade time is going to be between four and seven with people going home.
Then I'll offer an amendment to this legislation that we change the closing, the business hours from eight in the morning to seven P.M. at night. Got that? You have a second on that? Ms. White? About a second on that?
No, could I? No, I'm not seconding it, I'm sorry.
All right, I got a second, go ahead.
I just want to say that at the Planning Commission, the note said that, and I was confused about this today, or the other day when I was reading it, the hours, he asked for the hours recommended to be amended to nine A.M. to seven-thirty P.M. So, but the legislation that we have says eight to eight.
That is correct. The actual hours of operation were like ten-thirty to seven and I brought up to staff that, wait a minute, they might be there a little bit earlier to open up and they might need a little bit of time to close it down. And so we discussed the, I think, nine-thirty to seven-thirty, something like that.
Nine to seven-thirty.
And some of the Planning Commission recommendation was, we'll just make it eight to eight. So that's really how that, that came about. I mean, we're comfortable with the shorter hours, you know.
Yeah, as a practical matter, I mean, if you told me I could be open twenty-four seven, we're never going to be open on Sunday. No business I'm ever involved in is open on Sunday. Never has been, not going to be. In terms of the daily hours, the doors open, I mean, if y'all put no restrictions on it, the doors would open at ten-thirty and they would close at seven. Now, if there's a customer in there looking around, I mean, we're going to let them finish. We're not going to do an install after that. I mean, they would have to come back the next day for that. You know, we'll have people come in, you know, earlier than that to, you know, start getting their paperwork together and stuff for the day. So I would ask for some leeway on that, but in terms of being open to the public, I mean, ten-thirty to seven is our, is what we try to do. That's what we're asked by our franchisor to do. If y'all can live with that, that's really what I need.
You want to adjust your amendment to say ten-thirty to seven?
Sure.
I withdraw my second.
All right.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you got that, Caitlin?
Ten to seven, and I got a second here.
All right, Mr. Taylor?
Back to the noise issue, you're changing, you're changing tires, correct? Well, I mean, you're putting tires on rims.
We do put tires on rims, yes.
Let's vote on this, we're getting off point.
Yeah, okay.
Let's vote on this amendment, then we'll come back to your question, okay? All right, on the motion to amend.
To amend, Ross.
Was it ten or ten-thirty to seven?
Ten-thirty to seven. The motion was ten to seven.
Said ten.
Ten to seven, okay.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
I know what you're about to say, but go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I thought about what I said, it was unintentional if I, if I was misleading the, yeah, I mean, the tires are mounted on the rims inside of the facility. They are. But in, you know, and there is noise with that because it's, I mean, you're mounting tires on a rim. But, you know, that, that sound is not going to transmit toward the neighborhood you're talking about because there's no, there's no opening in that direction in terms of the building. Do you follow me?
I do, I have a lot of vehicles and, I mean, I buy a lot of tires. So I've been in tire shops and there's noise from, there's air pressure noises and.
There is on mounting the tire and I was, I really, I didn't, I was not trying to sound misleading on that. What I was really thinking about was the ratchet because a lot of that work is often done, you know, on the ground outside of where the, in some shops. All of ours is done inside. We don't do any mountings outside. I mean, we don't even have the ability to mount outside.
Ms. Ross, do you, was there another amendment that we wanted to do?
There was, there was a discussion about prohibiting the outside storage of tires. We can discuss what that verbiage should be if you're ready to.
That would be my amendment.
Okay.
No outside displays, was that basically?
Yeah, that was the, I think, I thought that was the motion.
Yeah, so I'd like to have two parts to that amendment all rolled into one that relate to the same matter. In subsection C, we would delete the second sentence and just plainly state outside storage of tires is prohibited. And then we would delete subsection D in its entirety. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, so that removes any outside.
So I'll say that one more time. So when you look at subsection C under section two, the second sentence would be deleted and replaced with the words outside storage of tires is prohibited. And then subsection D would be deleted in its entirety. And then we would renumber the sections afterwards when we make a clean copy of this.
So this is, that basically says all tires are inside? I like that.
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's my amendment.
Ms. White?
But what about the rims? Are they going to be outside too?
Oh.
No.
No? No? Okay.
What's your average cost of your rim retail?
About four hundred dollars.
One?
Or one, yeah.
They're expensive. They won't be outside, I guarantee you.
Sixteen hundred to two thousand, I'd say, typically.
Here's my question.
Go ahead.
Oh, do we need to vote on my amendment?
You got the amendment, Caitlin? Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
I have one question.
One more.
Well, it's just a question. I know you said that there's not a lot of noise when you mount the tire onto the rim. How do you mount the rim onto the...
Well, I mean, no, there, there is noise, but it's inside the structure.
I understand that. I understand that. How do you mount those rims without using air, air wrenches?
You don't...
Onto the, onto the...
Yeah, you don't have a, you don't have a, you don't have a...
You don't have lug nuts?
You're talking about mounting them onto the, mounting, mounting them onto the car.
Yeah.
Torque, torque wrench. You use a, you use a, I mean, it's a ratchet wrench, but it's a torque racket, ratchet wrench where you actually...
Are you not using, is it a torque wrench? You're not using an air?
No, it is a torque wrench. We are, we do not allow air wrenches.
Air wrenches will warp, will warp the rim and...
That's right.
...warrant the warranty. And they, they, they have to be, there's a specific torque that has to go on each rim, so...
And it's car-specific. I will tell you, before I got in this business, I didn't know. Anytime I went to a tire shop and had a tire fixed and they put it back on, they ran it up there just as tight as that, that ratchet would turn it. But that is not the way it's supposed to be done, even on stock.
Ms. Ross?
Okay. I came in here thinking I was totally against this, that I was going to vote against it because of the noise and everything. So I think you've convinced me. But the only thing that's going to convince me is you give me your personal cell phone number. So if we get any calls and complaints, then I can call you.
I will give you that. We, we, I mean, you can have my home office number, too. I answer it myself.
Okay. I want, I want your numbers before you leave.
I'll give them to you.
All right. How about a motion to adopt this amendment?
One, two, three, four.
Where are we at on readings first?
Third.
Okay. How about a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
On the motion?
Hold it. Let's get a second.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. White?
Uh, there's an amendment. Everybody has it on their desk. It's just a typographical error in section five.
Okay. Everybody got that?
It wasn't, it was just a small thing. But, yeah, it was about Levy Baptist Church.
We have to amend that? Can we just do it?
I wondered if it had to be amended, yeah.
Well, we should. It's an emergency clause. Okay, all right. We got a motion to amend for that typo. And how about a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. White?
Uh, there's an amendment. Everybody has it on their desk. It's just a typographical
error in section five.
Okay. Everybody got that?
It wasn't, it was just a small thing. But, yeah, it was about Levy Baptist Church.
We have to amend that? Can we just do it?
I wondered if it had to be amended, yeah.
Well, we should. It's an emergency clause. Okay, all right. We got a motion to amend for that typo. And how about a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. White?
Uh, there's an amendment. Everybody has it on their desk. It's just a typographical error in section five.
Okay. Everybody got that?
It wasn't, it was just a small thing. But, yeah, it was about Levy Baptist Church.
We have to amend that? Can we just do it?
I wondered if it had to be amended, yeah.
Well, we should. It's an emergency clause. Okay, all right. We got a motion to amend for that typo. And how about a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to adopt as amended? Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry.
I have a question for Mr. Spencer. Please.
Oh, this is the wrong one.
Sir, what is a CL zone, sir?
That came out of the Levy Jump Start. So that's the new Levy's downtown zone for that area. So they created a new zoning category called CL. And Park Hill has one called CP for, it's commercial Park Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Witcher?
Quick, quick. Either Mr. Spencer or Ms. White, I am a bit concerned about the traffic on Marion. It zips off the interstate and goes by this building. Could you talk about that a little bit? What, what are we looking at in the way of precautions for the kids and for the traffic in that area?
This has been a daycare for fourteen years and we've had no issues with it. It's just a change of ownership. So with the change of ownership, we are getting some improvements to the playground area.
Right.
But, but it's been constant operation for fourteen years.
Okay, I can buy into that. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? And a second?
We need a second.
We need a second. On the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
For adoption.
Second.
Any questions, comments? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This concludes new business.
Thank you. Public comment?
Mayor, I'm ready now.
Okay. Yeah, we got one more. I'm sorry. Let's go back to, uh...
R sixteen thirty?
The unfinished business, R sixteen thirty. Can we call that?
R sixteen thirty, Alderman Baxter. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement to rehabilitate property located at six oh one fifty-fifth Terrace Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
Real quick, Mayor, I know that in my absence last meeting, there was some issues with a rehab agreement. However, I've talked extensively with the, the applicant for this rehab, and they understand that there are, there, anytime we enter into a rehab agreement, there is a great, transfer great reward, but yet still a great risk. So I wanted to ensure that the parties understood, you know, what was at stake as far as entering into the rehab agreement. I further talked with the applicant and said that, you know, had received calls from the neighborhood saying, hey, you know, what's the deal on this? I know you guys had, you guys, as in the council, had, uh, put it up for condemnation, and we approved the condemnation. However, I spoke and said that any, anytime a city can rebuild a property versus tear it down, that is obviously the way we would like to go. Unfortunately, sometimes that's not, you know, that's not in the, in the plans. However, Ms. McVicker, with her contractor, has stepped up and said, look, we'd like to enter into rehab agreement. And I said, okay, just as long as you understand that there are benchmarks to be met, and that we would expect you to meet those. And if you want to proceed forward, we'll do that. And that's what has taken place. So I'll bring this before you now as a rehab agreement and ask for your consideration in approving this.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. Questions, comments? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to back up just a little bit, too, on the consent agenda. I want to thank John Beavers for agreeing to serve on the Housing Authority Board, Sylvester Smith, Karen Bryant, and Buck Matthews for keeping an eye on wastewater for us. They're not here, but they do a wonderful job and they're great volunteers. So we want to thank them. Okay, now let's go to public comment. Jimmy Yard?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Witcher, for your information, Robert Wright, former owner of Arkansas Supply, donated quite a few computers to the Hays Center. They had one to seven and eight on them, because I did a lot of their communication work. So they may be somewhere down there.
Not today. They have three down. They're not functioning.
And JR's not here tonight, so we all can go home early.
Pass it down. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Uh, city council members?
Oh, I do.
I've seen none. I've, I've just passed out a, our overlay program for 2016. This was very, very hard this year to try to take into consideration traffic volume and trying to evenly split our budget up from ward to ward. So this was our professional opinion and all of our engineers' opinion, that these ones that we chose this year for 2016 were the streets that had the most traffic with the most amount of damage that needed to be repaired. Now, I will tell you that in Ward Two in 2017, unless, you know, our, our, our guide that we've got, we look at starting Lynch Drive in 2017 and possibly Colonel Maynard Road. And we, again, in, in Wards Two and Three, most of our arterials are state highways. And in Ward Three, there is, Camp Robinson and MacArthur are state highways. And in Ward Four, probably in 2017, we will be doing North Hills, uh, north of, uh...
Bridge.
Of McCain.
To Sherwood.
Yeah. So that's, that's what we're thanking for 2017. But I wanted to give you a chance to look at these. If you've got streets that are heavily trafficked, that are worse than what we've got, we certainly want to hear about it. We've got plenty of time, you know, next, between now and next council meeting, you know, to bend my ear or Chris's ear or Chief Bradley's ear.
Mayor, I, the only comment I have is that I know that all of the Ward Four people that have called me about North Hills Boulevard, South and McCain Boulevard are going to be excited about this. I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's our worst street right now.
It is the worst, yeah.
Ms. White?
Um, you didn't mention about Ward One in 2017, but I sure hope Fairway is one of those ones to consider.
Yeah, I tried to get Fairway in here this year, and we just couldn't fit it, so...
It's, it's in bad shape.
Yeah. And, and if these bids come in, remember last year, we, after we bid it out, they, we came in about a hundred thousand dollars low or something like that. If that happens again this year, then we'll be able to come back and do some of these others sooner than, than next year.
Can I, can I ask?
Mr. Taylor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Washington, from plum to palm, if, if I'm not mistaken, we just did that not too long ago, a couple of years.
I don't know, is that down there by Oakley?
There was a section that was, year before last, that was done, but it was not this section. I think it was a section that was further out that was done, I believe. But the intent was, there was, one piece of it was done year before last, and it was a completion of that project. So, I mean, we'll double check that, that reference. But it, the intent was to complete that section that did not get completed year before last.
Yeah, I think it's a little further down than this, because we, we had went almost down to Baldwin, I think.
We'll, we'll double check it, but that was the intent. And I thought, we thought that was the, the right, uh, reference points.
Yep. Okay, Ms. Ross?
What was the estimate on Fairway from North Hills? The school traffic, that, that told, the road is just totally destroyed after all the construction.
I don't know that we did an estimate on that. Did we?
Because that was the number one that we've had on the list for, from the very beginning when we started doing overlays, and it always keeps getting overlooked. And I'm just wondering